I call this work session of the Lou Ray Town Council order. Will you please stand and join me in a moment of silence? I'll ask Councilman Pettit to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dohmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
And Mr. Sowers?
Here.
All right, discussion items. Mr. Christman, Christmas decorations.
First thing on your, in your packet is, um, new Christmas decorations. This was an item that council reviewed last year, you know, provided some funding for the current budget to update our decorations up and down Main Street. The current ones are kind of getting pretty old and difficult to maintain, so we had provided a catalog from the Late Summer Mosca, which is our typical vendor for these types of activities. They include the existing wreaths with three candles and bow like we have right now all the way through town. They also have some other options in here. There is a sale on the wreaths through tomorrow at 5:00 p.m., so that's why I was trying to get it on the agenda and get you guys to look at this and try to give Lynn and I some advice on what you think that we should go with. Now, the big thing is, this is a 20-year decision probably, so we need you guys' input because we want to make sure we put up something and we buy something that both council and the town are happy to, you know, have upon our local screen through the Christmas season, et cetera.
Did I miss the, I thought the sale, when I read, was ended in August.
Well, we have one through 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. Lynn just told me that today, so...
Then I'm more interested in doing it then.
No, no, you know, we, they have a sale just about once a month through the end of September, but then it takes eight weeks to deliver these things, so if we were going to look out for this winter's installation, we would need to place an order fairly soon. We have the funds, we were just going to use the funds for however many units they would allow us to purchase, you know, whatever that purchase price was. There's a big variety in terms of pricing when you go from the three candle wreaths with individual, and all these are LEDs, the ones we have now are not, so when you go from that to just a simple, like further back, when you have like a lute tree or a cane can or things like that, or the Tippy Star, those are much cheaper, you know, to purchase those, but it's more expensive to buy the nicer ones, and that's what the town had invested in last year.
All right, council, your thoughts?
I, I looked at this and just like Ron said, you know, I noticed the sale date cutting off in August on most all of these, but, and that's what triggered my thoughts. I was looking at this, regardless of what we pick, the prices range from around 700 for the cheapest type to around 1,400 for the nicest. With the budget, if you take the average of that, and I'd be on the conservative side, like, let's say 900, that would buy 50 decorations. I'm not sure what our total number is.
About the budget?
No, no, what our total number is of quantities.
We maintain about 100 units right now.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought it was...
So, we don't necessarily install them all, but we maintain 100, just because we have quite a few poles up and down Main Street. Now, we have some poles that we've lost, say on the west end, where we took out some street poles to put in the roundabout. We lost several poles in that sector. We lost some poles in some other areas. We didn't go as far on North Broad or South Broad and in Virginia Avenue as we have in years past, simply because we were running low, we have to rehab the units and then put them back up. So, we keep a fair inventory of those units, and, you know, we were looking at 100 units at $450, you know, pop if we could find that sale price. If not, we can always just buy whatever the funding that we have.
Yeah. Well, I've just, you're looking at the, let me pull this back up here, Brian, I'll get to the wreaths. Yeah, 'cause the wreaths, I'm seeing, they're running in the $800, $900 range?
Mm-mm, $780, $880.
Whether you get a vinyl bow or...
Yeah, the Sun Rel fabric is typically the longer elastic one.
Right.
That's the one we get. Now, the other thing is, is that those are the four-and-a-half footers, which is what we have now.
Okay.
That's the exact, so that picture right there, that picture is what we have heard.
Okay, right.
Four-and-a-half foot size.
Right.
And if you flip to the next page where it talks about the Sun Rel those, the unit that's to the right, the wreath that's to the right in front of it, that's the...
Okay.
Right there. That one is just about our size. It doesn't have the ornaments in it, but it has the lights, it's just about four and a half.
Yeah. Well, looking at the, just me, I think this is a, I mean, we're talking about $45,000. This is a big decision. At, the savings, it looks like when they do run the sales, runs around 19%, which is about an 8,500, just under $9,000 savings. Me personally, I would, I think this needs more attention than a quick decision tonight with the volume that, and I'm assuming that, you know, if we make this purchase out of this budget year, of course, but we make it maybe after the first of the year in time to make a decision of exactly what we want, and it might be repeating the same. We've got enough wreaths to get us through...
We do.
I mean, uh...
We're going to be stretched a little bit on the outer periphery, but I think we've got enough.
Yeah, there's a few damage that you just don't put up out on the far east end or the far west end.
Yeah, we just can't, we can't break that. But, you know, one of the things that Lynn had talked about based on these prices is, you know, that was the funding that was allocated. Even if we bought 50 of the units this year and 50 of the units next year, that would be about that pricing for those exact same wreaths. So, we would, we would be able to buy, instead of buying the full 100 of the units, we would buy about half this fiscal year and then half next fiscal year, which we can do that and we can mix and match them if that's what council desires, but...
Was this the manufacturer of the last ones that we have?
Yeah.
Okay. And what we've got now, correct me if I'm wrong, we've purchased them over time, didn't we? Because it seems like we just had wreaths downtown, right here in the downtown area, and then each year we kept adding?
We added three, we had three purchases from what I've been able to tell.
Okay, okay. So, they're different ages as far as what we have in stock?
Yeah, we bought three, three different sets from what I've been able to tell. So, we can buy them and set, skin them, move forward. If we stay in the same type, if we go to a different type, we can also alternate units, you know, up and down the street. Some communities do that, where they have alternating, you know, decorations. They all, they'll have four total types and three total types, and they'll just, you know, leap wrong, you know, down the street. So, we can go to something like that, you know, I, it's, it's a, the key thing is that we do different types of decorations. We need to make sure that the mounting brackets are all the same so that our public work staff don't have to try to keep track of three different mounting mechanisms while they're up and walking trouble.
Right.
So, that would be the one key thing that I would want to make sure that we do there.
Well, what makes one of these wreaths not able to put up? What, how's it deter, the lights go out?
The wiring basically der...
And it's not something we can change ourselves?
What we have, and we rewired a bunch of them to make them work. It's just a time-consuming costly project, and what happens is you put it up there and it works, and then within a week it dies, and then you take the whole unit down.
It's like anything else that gets old.
Yeah, and they spend a lot of time, spending more and more time every year now taking old ones down that are, you know, default, putting new ones up that are...
Only thing I can see is, I'm not a big fan of the vinyl bows, if they only last a couple of years.
Yeah. The other, the Sun Rel those typically last a little bit longer, and that's what we transitioned to. The bows are fairly easy to replace.
Okay.
Individual one, it's the light wiring, and more importantly, transitioning to LED bulbs would be a big deal for us.
What happens to the old ones when we get rid of them?
Well, you know, we can keep them always in the inventory, keep the best ones and keep them wired and stocked.
Sounds like when we hoard them.
And then keep them in reserve and then use them as we need them. You know, in the past, like Jason was saying, the town expanded its coverage, instead of West on Main Street, and then added North Broad Street as well as a little bit on Virginia Avenue in the past, and Campbell Street. So, we could always take a look at that, and it never hurts, as long as we have room for storage, it never hurts to have a few extra sitting around even if they're old ones, as long as they work and we can use them in a pinch, that's always a thing.
Okay, everybody happy with that? We'll wait till next year?
Yeah, I'll bring them back to you guys again. You have the catalog. There are a couple of the vendors out there, but Mosca is the one that typically gives us a good standard product at one of the more competitive prices, and they have good quality stuff. We've never really messed with any of the other vendors. A lot of that stuff you can get is fairly cheap and it doesn't hold up. We don't get the markets with it.
Okay, let's do that. I'm sorry, Jason.
Well, just one quick question while, while we're on the topic. I saw in this, the LED bulbs are C7s, which fit, I guess, like an E12 base, so that's basically a typical sized, also made in an incandescent bulb, which I guess what we have now is incandescent.
Yeah, for the most part. We've been slowly transitioning...
But we could put LEDs in our, the old ones that we had that are good shape will accept a C7 LED bulb. Is that correct?
We have to do it, also, some of the older, older ones, we have to go in and change the voltage transformer because it will not take LED circuit.
Right.
We have to change those out.
Okay. But they could be converted for the ones that are in good shape, our old ones, yeah?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anybody else have comments on that? So, I would suggest that, again, we push this off till after the first of the year, and I would suggest that the mayor and council probably appoint a committee next year. I don't think seven of us could ever decide on, on what to say.
Good point.
So, I'll just kick that can on down the road, but anyway. All right, next up, Mr. Christman.
Yeah, the Hawksville Creek Advisory Plaque. So, we had talked about this, it's been the weekly report, and then we've been back and forth on it as a town government with a few different things over the last couple of months. So, currently, the current placard is in your packet along with the latest sampling table from Friends of the Shandau River. So, the most recent sample, which was September 9th, indicates that E. coli levels are significantly lower and fall below the standard that was selected by Friends of the Shandau River. So, in the meantime, I've had conversations with Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources in Richmond and Virginia Department of Health, the new health director here, and some of the environmental staff, you know, in Winchester. So, Wildlife Resources has indicated they do not intend to restock drought in the stream so long as E. coli levels are elevated, and number two, the town has its signs posted. The Virginia Department of Health folks indicate while they will not be placing any signs or making any health advisories, they did support the town if we wanted to add any type of language to our signs or in the event that, you know, the signs stay up through the winter or however long that you folks want to leave them up. They also provided other potential resources for the town to refer people online for additional information. We've researched a couple of those. Most of them are fairly broad and not applicable to, like, this specific situation, which is E. coli back area in freshwater. A lot of them are saltwater, a lot of them are not E. coli, they're more alvele, the red and, or the green and blue alvele bones, those types of advisories. So, we're continuing to look at those resources. The essential issue now is whether or not we leave the signs up, and if we leave them up, what language or links should the town change or add to those signs? And if the sign should come down now that the testing does not show elevated levels of E. coli anymore for the remainder of this testing period, we're just looking for guidance on the preferences of the majority of council with this. So, in the last statement in your report, the stream health and the water quality have been important for a way for a long time, so I included some representations in the weekly report as well as some handouts from Jennifer at your, at your seats to look at some of the things that we had in, you know, over the years, over the last, the last 15 years that I know of. But, in this particular issue, the question for council is, what would you like us to do with those?
Well, I'll first say that throughout history, Lou Ray has done an impressive number of things to improve the health of the Hawksville despite the fact that it is a, you know, a state waterway, and the only thing that behooves us to do that is just the fact that we want to take care of the stream that goes through the middle of our community, and I think that should be commended, and it's a long list of things that have been implemented throughout the years. As far as what you're saying about DWR, obviously, condition number one is satisfied and probably will be unless we get some crazy unseasonable weather conditions in the next eight months. But condition two about the signs is interesting. Did you get the sense that they would not stock it if there were any signs whatsoever, or was that contingent on the language of the signs?
It was contingent upon the top language, which was recently reported elevated E. coli levels. So, with that statement being on that sign, that told them that, they're under the assumption that we're not going to have these up if the elevated E. coli levels don't exist in Hawksville. Like, there would be no reason for us to keep this exact sign up if the sampling levels in the Hawksville were not elevated above the standard. So, they're assuming that when that, when that testing falls below that standard, then we do not have the signs up, and then they're okay to continue stocking. And they usually stock in the cooler most of the year. I mean, they won't really stock, October typically is the first time we see them, and they stock through the winter on and off through early spring. That's typically when they stock the drought because they have the highest viability because the water's cooler and there's more oxygen.
Because I just, I wonder if there's a version of the language to where we could keep the signs up, which I think we should keep some kind of signs up so people can continue to, you know, inform themselves, particularly as things might change. But I also don't think it's in our best interest to have language that would, you know, deter DWR from stocking a stream and creating something that's a wonderful attraction for our community, and I think most people would agree with that, but I'm curious to hear what others think.
Well, do we have any idea why the sampling went down so much in this last one?
No, you know, you're looking at lower temperatures.
Susan might know.
Yeah, you're looking at lower temperatures, you're looking at, you know, we had a recent flood event where we watched the stream, you know, that was a huge amount of water that went down through the corridor. But typically, it's bacteria levels and stream water temperature.
Well, one reading doesn't do that much for me. I like seeing two or three in a row to have some confidence that the creek is back where it should be.
Yeah, and I've reached out to the friends, but I'm trying to pin down, like, when's your testing period over? Like, when's your summer E. coli program over? And I haven't gotten an answer, answer back on that. Done.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I guess it's not really rocket science that, you know, the rain that we needed, cooler temperatures, and the whole basin being kind of washed out by a flooding event, getting all the gunk out for at least the near future would make a difference. I also want to say that I appreciated the memo from council about the town's lack of liability under the actions that the town has taken and the standard of gross negligence that exists in state law, because certainly, testing and signage and the kinds of things that we have done aren't really gross negligence, maybe quite the opposite. Though I did appreciate that, and I think that can kind of inform what kind of language makes sense for the signs. I did maybe, you know, want to, A, address the fact that we do have this draft statement that we were encouraged to maybe somehow adopt by the Community Works Group to encourage the, the county and other entities outside of the town lines to get involved, and I think it's a, it's a well-worded and gracious statement that we might consider adopting. And then the other thing, when we're done with this discussion, I'm going to make a motion just directing and encouraging staff to continue implementing, you know, strategies, practices, pursuing grants as they have been, to just do whatever we can do to improve stream health, because there's plenty of things that we can do that are actually in our ability versus worrying about what people outside of our jurisdiction are doing. So, I don't know what, how others feel about the statement. Curious to hear.
Hey, council, your thoughts?
I can't see us compromising having the, the stream restocked. I think that we need to do whatever we need to do to be compliant with what they're requesting since, considering the levels or elevated levels have been reduced, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of having anything that's going to prevent that from happening, so. That's what I'm saying. I can't see a good reason if it's, if the levels have been reduced, it's, we're going into cool weather, it's raining today, it's going to be, you know, more, it's not going to be dry and arid and conducive to, to higher levels, so...
One thing that I was going to recommend is, I was going to reach back out to Department of Health in their environmental section, the Office of Waterborne Hazards. Maybe we can craft a message that would be both supported by Office of Waterborne Hazards as well as Department of Wildlife Resources in terms of information for the general public and whether we provide it on our website, we post it on the stream banks, we can both. If I can conscribe such a message that would meet both of those state agency standards, bring that back to you folks and see what you think about that. Would that be an option that you'd be willing to entertain?
I'd like that, because I want to see if there's a language that works. Because I think we should, we should keep some kind of signage so people can be informed and, you know...
But be informed of what is the issue? So, the problem that something like this also poses is, yes, we do want people to be informed, but if we're creating an issue when there isn't one, then that's not good either. So, it's finding that balance of, yeah, we want to make sure people are well-informed and doing the right thing, being responsible, but...
Yeah, and I wonder if the language looks like something, you know, not recently elevated levels, but because that's, depending on your definition of recently, that's probably not true anymore, frankly, but maybe historically elevated levels, so we encourage you to, you know, can, something like that. Because it is true that in this last six months timeframe, I mean, there have been elevated levels, so. I don't know, I want to think about people. I mean, I want people to have the chance to protect themselves, whatever that means to them. I mean, I was never a, I don't know, I was a one-mask guy if I was around a lot of people. I've met a lot of like three-mask people that were really paranoid, and I want people to have the chance to do what makes them comfortable, I guess, you know? But also not panic people, so I get it.
I'll see what those agencies are willing to provide to us as far as direction, and then combine that and then bring that back to you. You'll probably see it first in like a weekly report as a draft, and then we could take it as an action at some point in the fall, either the October, the November, or February.
So, I'm sorry if I missed it. Where are we at with engaging with the people that actually could potentially create the cures to it instead of, you know, this is kind of like a Band-Aid measure here?
I'm just going to take the state language and send it also to the Friends group and just see if the Friends of Shandau River, their advisory group also supports that message and then bring that back to you folks.
So, then beyond that, so if we're getting to the actual root causes, are we, as a town, comfortable sending some things out to different individuals, municipalities that can actually affect change to improve the issue long-term instead of just putting a sign up that doesn't actually...
I mean, I think we definitely ought to evaluate this statement for the county, and, I mean, how do people feel about that? Did people get a chance to, to take a look at that? I might be jumping on something people haven't gotten the chance to read.
Has, has anyone decided or found out where the source of pollution is? I mean, I, I'd like to know. It's easier for me to think about what to do about it.
There's a lot of acreage to explain from us, and there's a lot of uses in that acreage. And so, when I talk to the two state agencies, neither one of them, actually the third state agency was Office of Waterborne Hazards, putting a finger on the single cause is very difficult. Putting on the finger on like multiplicity of causes is much easier for a lot of those agencies to come out with, so. But, interestingly enough, all of that conversation was unofficial, off the record. Official statements were few and far between, in fact, numbered in zeros. So, I'll keep pushing on that to see if we can get some solid information that we can use as a community to help our citizens.
Okay, it seems like we have like two different things going on. So, initially, the staff needs direction on the signs. Do we want to leave the signs up for right now, or did everybody get the, I guess, the memo from Jason, from Litten? Sorry, anybody read that?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody's got that? Okay, all right. So, what is your pleasure on that? Leave the signs up until Brian can make some inquiries, or?
Well, again, I thought that's what we had just discussed, that he was going to get with the two parties and bring it back to us by email maybe next week for a decision in the next meeting, October and November.
Okay, so, no change right now then?
Yeah.
Status quo right now? Okay, okay, all right. So, the other one is, of course, this, I guess, memo or whatever to send to the interested parties, I guess you would say, about that. What do y'all want to do about that?
And, I'm sorry, yeah, can you please, so, the distribution for this is who?
This would be from us to the county. This is, this was drafted in part by the Community Works Group and Skip Alburn, and I think it's very reasonable, because it is true that it's, it's a whole lot of, you know, acreage that is not, it goes well beyond Linden Avenue, you know?
Yes, right.
Everything between Linden Avenue and the National Park, basically.
Okay.
I see a typo if we're talking about just sending...
Yeah, that's it. I mean, we need to, like, redline this thing, like, whatever y'all think needs to be changed.
I remember it came up that if we, if we was going to send a letter to the supervisors, at least speak to them and say, "We need some help. What can you do to help us?" Has that been asked by us, to the supervisors? I think we ought to, I think we ought to do that. I think we ought to say, "Hey, look, you know, you should know by now, we have high E. coli counts, and we're not so sure where it comes from, but we'd like you to help us and have, figure out where they are and what to do about it." Nothing wrong with asking.
Yeah, I think, I think anything we send should have a little bit more call to action.
Yeah.
Specific action instead of just kind of...
So, what kind of, how do we want to handle that? Like, do a couple of us want to take a look at this and see if there's any changes that need to be made, and then come back to it at the next meeting? I mean, just so it doesn't, you know, float away. I defer to others on that.
Everybody okay with that?
I'm not so sure why you can't just have Brian call the supervisor and say, "Hey, can, can you help us? I mean, just do it tomorrow." Why worry about drafting a statement to say, make sure they know that we know there's a situation that we'd like to know what they know? I don't see anything wrong with asking.
Um, council, your thoughts?
Yeah, I would do both. I would send out a letter and then follow up with some calls.
Unformality, having him writing.
We've been talking about joint meetings as well. That might be a good topic for discussion, or maybe not. I don't want the meeting to go.
Okay. What do y'all want to do? You want to wait till the next meeting and redraft this or add some, some different language to it?
Yeah, we can do informally via email if we had some, anybody had some pointers sent.
There's a few volunteers...
Is that fine? Shoot them to you.
I think you have.
I mean, I, I can...
Where was the source of this?
Thank you, Alex.
This is from the, this is from the Community Works Group.
Okay. Yeah, I think it just needs more specificity.
So, I mean, I can definitely, I can kind of canvas y'all to see what changes you'd want to see.
Yeah, okay.
And then I did want to ask one more question. I know that there's a attorney-client privilege issue, and there are probably parts of this that, you know, you wouldn't want to share, but I think if there's a way that we can share this summary of liability, that'd be helpful to people. I mean, I don't know, concerned parties, because I think maybe folks need to know that. I don't...
Yeah, we'd better, we'd better check on that before we, before we do that.
It's smart, man. Always defer.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Yeah, okay.
Because I was, I was encouraged by it.
Yeah, I was too. All right, anybody else on this topic?
I might make that motion still. If, we're in a special meeting, right? We can make motions.
Yeah.
All right. I make a motion to encourage the staff to continue to pursue any available resources and strategies to improve the stream health of the Hawksville, including but not limited to enhancing riparian buffers, increasing canopy coverage, aeration, aquatic vegetation, and other strategies deemed necessary and proper by town staff.
Second it.
Okay, second. Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Lillard? Ms. Lillard? I'm going to... Yes. Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
All right, so there is no public hearing. That's been withdrawn. Okay, action items, I guess, Mr. Christman, you have this?
Yep, we have a parking waiver request from a local investment group that is looking to purchase a local building at 15 Campbell Street there, the current contract purchaser. They have had several conversations with council and the commission and Brad has done a couple of presentations. He's also had a couple of meetings, not only with me, but from at least one council person. Their current request is included as page two in your packet. And essentially, they are, of the 21 parking spaces that their math formula indicates that they need for their uses, they are going to be constructing 18 of those spaces on their property. And so, they are requesting a waiver for three spaces. So, that is the request for you now. There are also a few other modifications which, being that the spaces would be constructed on private property, would not exactly pertain to them like it would for us if we were building public spaces, but I had indicated to Brad that it doesn't hurt to put them in this request letter and cover those topics at the same time. That is what's before council to see. And Brad's here. How are you?
Brad, would you like to speak?
Sure, happy to talk for a second, answer any questions y'all have. Good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Regular customer at this point. Yeah, so, I think going back to last meeting, Councilman Pettit came up with an idea about how we might be able to get more parking on the property at 15 Campbell and I want to thank you a lot. That was great. He and I spent some time out on site, I think it was two or three days, two or three days later and that really kind of, I don't know, got our, got us thinking about how we could use that space in the back. And so, kind of riffing off of his idea, our architect came up with what, I'm going to use words that I kind of know what they mean, but hopefully they'll mean more to you than they mean, mean to you, more to you than they mean to me, which is a single double-loaded corridor. So, it will remain kind of a single lane that kind of goes through that, through that area back there, but instead of it just being parking off of one side right now on the property at 15 Campbell, it'll actually be parking on both sides. And through that, we're able to get 18 spots back there. Again, as Brian mentioned, you know, the calculations under 506 require us to have 21 spots, we can get 18 on property, we're asking for a waiver for three spots and then there are two small other pieces of the code. I think it was a 10-foot wide requirement for the spaces, we're looking at nine-foot wide spaces so we can get as many on there as possible. And the other was, the spaces have to be three feet from the property line and no more than 10 feet from the residential structure. I'm not sure any of the spaces will actually comply with that. A few of them may, I can tell you most of them won't, but again, we're trying to get as many spaces on the property as possible. That was kind of our, our number one goal as, as y'all had suggested at the last meeting.
All right, council, any questions for Brad?
I just, I'll just share, I also want to thank Brad for the time he took to, to come back here to town and we spent a couple hours out there that day looking and discussing and he had some great ideas, his architects, you know, as well, have some great ideas and I think what they're coming up with is, is a great plan. It's doing, you know, for, we talked about this briefly last council, but for council members that may not know, the, the property owns part of the parking that's already existing back in that corner. When I say the corner, basically from the back of that building towards where that lane turns at the railroad track wall, retaining wall. I'm not explaining it well, but anyway, so, he's able to create 18 spaces, that is physically on their property, not on public property. And I think many of us may not have known that years ago, this transferred what was town easement or right-of-way that had expired and is actually private. So, anyway, I applaud his efforts with that, with doing that. I think they're wise in doing exactly what he's saying as far as making those spaces a little tighter than what is normal or what we might be held to as a town. It's on their private land as well and the goal here is try to fit as many cars as you can accommodate in that space. So, I appreciate it, I, I think that's very good. The, and to clear though, the waiver that we're looking for tonight for the three extra spaces to, to qualify with this, those would just be three spaces anywhere, is that correct, Brian? So, that's just.
We're within 1,200 feet of the building, which he, obviously, he would like them as close as possible to the structure.
Also, so he, you are looking for dedicated spaces or just a waiver of the three?
Just a waiver.
All right, that was my understanding.
Yeah, just a waiver for the three.
That's what I thought, okay.
Exactly, so what we had discussed before, the, the nine, I guess it is, that are along the building would still be first come, first served for whoever, whether they're coming to the restaurant or staying there or neighbors living close by, that would all be shared just as it is today.
Exactly.
Okay, right, so we're not, as far as what the town owns, we're not taking anything from that that is open parking for anyone and everyone.
And that's why the public hearing and disposition of public property was withdrawn.
Right, that was my understanding.
There was no need for it based on their new plan.
Yep. Well, does anyone have?
All right, council, any questions for Brad?
I'll make the motion.
I mean, a good faith effort, so that's the only reason to oppose it.
Okay.
Exactly, yes, and I, I really appreciate it, I do.
Thank you for your help.
Sure. And I move that the parking waiver be approved as presented.
Same.
Okay, any more discussion?
I regret that I missed the last meeting, I was on the call, I wasn't here, it was just good conversation and I do appreciate the two of you. I understand both of you all went out prior to that meeting, right, and looked at the property. So, just councilperson to councilperson, thank you all for the time that y'all have invested in it and I'm glad that it worked out and appreciate your willingness to cooperate and follow some suggestions here that the council had.
Absolutely. Appreciate the ideas.
All right, any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you all, really appreciate it.
All right, that's pretty much all on the agenda. Council, you have any comments, anything on your mind? Danielle, how we doing?
Good.
Nobody? Okay. All right, let's see, I have just a couple of things. You have the invitation to the LDA, that's Tuesday, the 3rd, 5 to 7 at Gathering Grounds. Lake Arrowhead, we did have some issues a couple of weeks ago with the Shenandoah Marathon. Bo, anything else? Do we, anything else up there you want to tell us about? Lake Arrowhead, are we?
As far as complaints or?
Yeah, yeah.
So, basically, the county, state that they were not aware of and maybe the workshop advisors weren't, were particular individuals, however, there was a county, I mean, a county employee involved in all the original discussions about the marathon. So, as far as the complaints, we have one individual that has complained about the loud noise from the P.A. system that started around 40 or 40 when they started monitoring the racers, getting them put in areas, I guess, before they started, which did violate more of the county, it was on the, it was on the lake area, but it did violate the, violate the county ordinance as well as the towns, but it wasn't the lake area, it was a special event, but to the timeframe. So, other than that, I don't know that he's satisfied with our response, I don't think he is, so, but it's really, it's done. Hopefully, next year, we're looking to, after many emails, we're looking to have more sit-down meetings and what's, what's going on with it and making sure that all stakeholders are understanding what the actual event is.
Yeah, and I, I talked with him and I think he's okay with that, we just have to remember next year to, if they come back, to make sure we talk, like you say, talk to them, make sure of the regulations.
And I suggest to the company as well, the race company, is to notify, mail out notifications prior to the races to county residents, whoever it's affecting, whether it's roadways, they didn't do that either.
Yeah.
Or the other company does, will do that, so.
Okay, okay. Of course, you all have a letter from a concerned citizen, taxpayer about their experience at Lake Arrowhead and that's just an FYI, we're not going to get into that tonight, but maybe next year when we start talking about what we're doing up there. And I think what we're doing is working, I think we always realized we'd have to tweak it, it wasn't going to, wasn't going to be perfect right off the, right off the bat, but we can work on that next year.
I do think they're bringing up some good points in the letter, I will say that.
Yeah, I say, yeah, it's, yeah, we realize there would be some, some adjustments, yeah. Have a thank you letter, thank you note, whatever. Dear Mayor and Council Members, on behalf of the 227 Luray Pickleball Group members, we wish to thank all of you for the beautiful two new pickleball courts with gratitude, John Winslow.
That's very nice.